To record the session, is everyone there?
Yep.
We have Preston, I'm in there, Kayla. So the session begins now and we're going to begin by reviewing the problems, some selected problems from chapter eighteen. So could someone go ahead and read number one from chapter eighteen?
Comment, you want us to read this one that you have up here?
Yeah.
Okay, common static electricity involves charges ranging from nano colons to micro colons. How many electrons are needed to form a charge of negative two nano colons? And how many electrons must be removed from a neutral object to leave a net charge of negative point five zero micro colons?
Okay. So how do we proceed? This is a problem. So the goal is to so part A, the goal is to convert from nano from colons to electrons. Okay, so how do we proceed with this kind of problem? If we are solving it, how would you proceed? That's all I'm asking.
Would you have to know the charge of an electron?
Okay.
And that is negative one point six zero two times ten to the negative nineteen colons.
Negative what?
One point six zero two times ten to the negative nineteen.
Okay, so you would need to know the charge on an electron. So essentially, this is a unit conversion problem. Okay, so we know that's negative one point six times ten to the minus nineteen colons. That that is equal to one electron. Okay, so negative two nano colons. Now, what does nano mean?
Nano is nano is ten to the ninth.
No.
Negative nine.
Negative nine. Okay, so two point oh times ten to the negative nine colons will be the same as the conversion factor. Colons to electrons is one electron to negative one point six times ten to the minus nineteen colons. And pay attention to how I write the conversion factor. The goal is to cancel out the colons and and end up with electrons, right?
Right.
So the conversion factor must be written this way. So the colons are cancelled out and we love with what is native to the RBO one point six, negative one point six.
This point was negative point six two five.
Two divided by one point six?
Oh, one point two five.
Okay, it's one point two five. The two negative cancel out. So you have because you're talking about number of electrons. You cannot have a negative number of electrons. Okay, when you count in things, you cannot say you have, you know, minus two electrons or minus three electrons. So it makes sense for the answer to be positive number. Okay? Part B.
Okay. All you have to know, wouldn't you look at the fact that it's a neutron or that, I guess?
You said wouldn't I look at the fact that it's what?
A neutron. The or the neutron doesn't have a charge, so.
What are you talking about?
It says how many electrons must be removed from a neutral object to leave a net charge of point five micro colons.
Okay.
So you would still use, well, you would utilize a charge from electron, right?
Yeah. So basically, an object that is neutral, what is, what charge does it carry?
It didn't have a charge.
Doesn't have a charge. So if you want it to have a charge of negative point five micro colons, what do you have to do?
Wouldn't you?
Hold on, there is actually mistake here. So this should be just point five, not negative point five, because when you remove electrons, the object becomes positively charged, right?
Right.
When you remove electrons, you leave behind excess protons. That means the 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 net charge is positive. Does that make sense?
You said the net charge is positive whenever you're removing electrons?
Yes.
Yeah.
So so a neutral object, let's say neutral hydrogen has one electron, one proton, right? So the net charge is what?
Zero.
Zero. So if you take away one electron, what is the net charge?
It would be negative one.
No. If you remove one electron, then you have one unbalanced proton, which is plus one, right?
Right.
So when you remove negative charge, when you remove electrons, the object becomes positively charged. So in effect, what we're asking in part B is how many electrons are equivalent to in magnitude to point five micro colons? Okay?
Okay, so
So
wouldn't you just do the same thing as students for part A and just
Yeah, the same thing. So you will need to remove if you want to leave behind a positive charge of point five micro colons, you need to remove a negative charge of point five colons. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so so we're asking ourselves negative point five times that micro means ten to the minus six. So negative zero point five zero zero times that's minus six times one electron divided by one point six times ten to the minus nineteen colons. And this will give three point one three times ten to twelve electrons. Any questions?
No.
No, so that's number one.
Can you do, like, instead of going, like, straight through, can you do one from each section? So I see that it goes to the next section will be number ten. So that's what's called law.
Well, it's up to the the participants. If everyone wants us to skip some, we could do that. But I don't want to go at the speed of one person. I want to go at the speed of the rest of the group. So what does the class think? The next problem is number three, then number ten.
Do I ask the question again?
What I was asking.
Did ever, did ever, did everyone understand this problem? That's the first question.
Yes.
Okay, the next question is should we skip the other problem in this section, which is number three? Because it's similar. And go to the next section.
I don't have, I can't see the question.
You don't have the book open on your computer?
Well, I was afraid to pull up another tab. I can't.
Okay. So open the book and the next problem is number three and then number ten. We need, everyone needs to be looking at the wording of the problem as we go along.
I used to number three. Hello?
Yes, number three. Is everyone comfortable with number three? Now that we've done two parts of number one.
Is it under conductors and insulated?
No, it's under.
Chapter eighteen.
Chapter eighteen, problem section.
Section what? Eight point one? I'm confused. I'm under conceptual question.
No, scroll down to the problem solving question.
Number three, to start a car engine.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that one. Or wait, no, let's do number two. Hello?
Well, number two is the same. That's why I didn't select it because number two, three, four, they're almost the same. So the selected problem is not number one.
You don't think we should work on the same problem one month?
Basically, what I was asking was the fact that since we have a limited time with him on these review sections, instead of doing the same problem that has the same conceptual way to work it out, is work out a problem from each section so we can understand how to do something from that section instead of being lost on your own, not knowing how to do it.
I mean, that's how you know, like, we were going over a couple of minutes over the hour to cover all the question.
Well, even an hour will not be enough to cover all the problems on the list.
But I'm saying, like, do you have it right?
We can go, we can go over, but that will not be enough to cover all the problems that we have in this.
You can do it for hours. You can go over now.
Okay, let's go, let's not skip any problem. Let's just go sequentially and see how far we can go in this session. If there is need, we will have another session to look at the other problems. Okay? Preston, what did you say? Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, you said something. What was that?
I didn't say anything.
Okay. Okay, so I'm saying that let's go sequential. Let's not skip any problem because not everyone is on at the same, works at the same pace. So let's go with the problems I originally selected and let's try to go as fast as we can. So the next problem, I'm going to place it here on the the board. Okay, it says to start a car engine, the car will remove three point seven five times ten to the twenty one electrons through the starter motor. How many colons of charge will move? Okay, so again, like, like number one, this is a unit conversion problem. The only difference is we're going now from from what? From electrons to colons. Does that make sense to everyone? So we're going from electrons to colons. When we're given three point seven five times ten to twenty one electrons. And we know that's the conversion factor between colons and electrons is what?
It's one um electron will, okay, it's one point six zero times ten to the negative nineteen.
Okay. Now pay attention to how the conversion factor is written this time. Since we're going from electrons to colons, we have to write the conversion factor in a way that the electrons will cancel out and without with colons. Okay, so that gives us and this is minus, so minus one point six. That's a charge of one electron. So if we multiply this out, you will get negative six hundred colons. Okay, and does the same approach to number two. And and number, number four is the same as number one. So let's move on to the next section now, which is Coulomb's law. Eighteen point three. So starting with number ten.
You want us to read it?
Yes.
Okay, what is the repulsive force between two pit balls that are eight centimeters apart and have equal charges of negative thirty nano colons?
Let's go now. Okay. Let me plan the notes. Okay, so that's the next problem. So this problem is based on Coulomb's law. We know there are two charges. Q one. Okay, what is the separation of the two ball?
It's eight centimeters, but it converts into point eight point zero eight meters.
Okay, so that's and Q one is and maybe thirty nano colons. Q two is
Negative thirty nano colons.
Okay. So Coulomb's law. Can somebody state Coulomb's law?
It is, oh, K times absolute value of Q one times Q two divided by R square.
So is the force between any two charges is K times Q one, Q two, R squared. Okay? K is a constant. Q one is the first charge. Q two is the second charge. R is the separation between the two charges. So so K, you can take K as nine times ten to the minus okay, Newton meter squared of colons squared. And then we have thirty times ten to the minus nine colons. And then you have another thirty times ten to the minus nine colons divided by zero point zero eight meter squared. Okay, and so the answer is one point two seven times ten to the minus three Newtons. Okay? Any question? Okay, I'm not getting any feedback from the rest of the class. Is everyone on the same page?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So number eleven is similar, so we will not do eleven. Say it again?
I said, don't take a day or die. I ain't done right.
Yeah, your volume is really low. Can you speak up?
Um, no, you keep going.
Okay. All right. So the next problem is number twelve. Okay, so Preston, can you read number twelve for us?
Which, I haven't got to. It ain't popped on my screen yet.
Kayla, can you read number twelve?
Two point charges X zero A five point five point oh, noon force on each other. What will the force become if the distance between them is increased by a factor of three?
Okay. Thank you. Now, this, this is a concept problem. Try to give us the the charges, Q one, Q two, they didn't give us the separation. They just told us that the separation changed by a certain amount. So we're going to go back to Coulomb's law, Coulomb's equation. Which says the force between two charges is equal to K times Q one, Q two over R squared. So from this equation, we we can deduce that the force is proportional to the magnitude of Q one. Okay, the force is proportional to the magnitude of Q two. The force is also proportional to what?
Okay.
Well, K is a constant, so we will be not going to bring K into the comparison. So the three variables in this equation, you have Q one, Q two, and
R squared.
R squared. So how does F relate to R squared?
It'll be one over R squared.
Okay, so F is proportional to one over R squared. In other words, you would say that F is inversely proportional to R squared. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So what this means is that if you change Q one by a certain factor, F will change by the same factor. If you change Q two by a certain factor, F will change by the same factor. So let's say if you double Q one, then F will also double. If you double Q two, F will also double. Now, what happens when you change R?
Wouldn't it get smaller by a certain degree? Wait, no, no. Yeah, wouldn't it get smaller by a certain degree?
What will get smaller?
Um, F.
By what factor?
By whichever number that that you decide for R to be.
Okay, let's say if R doubles, if R increases by two, what will happen to F?
F would decrease by two or
No.
No, no, no.
You got the first part right. F will decrease, but F will not decrease by two. Could anybody say why?
No.
Because wouldn't it be a factor or is?
Look at R. What is special about R?
The square.
The square. Okay, so if R changes by two, R squared will change by what?
F would change by the square root of something?
No, you you overthinking the problem now. Now, if if R changes by two, let's say R increases by two, two squared is what?
Four.
Four. So if R changes by two, then R squared will change by four. That means F will change by one over four. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So so based on this analysis, if Q one doubles, then F also doubles. Okay, same thing with Q two. Now, if R doubles, then what happens to F?
F increases by
F decreases by
Four.
By, yes, yeah, by four, or F changes by one over four. You look at the equation, R is in the denominator. So whenever the denominator of a fraction increases, the overall fraction becomes smaller. Okay, so let's go back to the problem. You have a force of five Newtons. Now, if you increase the distance by three, what happens to the force?
It decreases by a third.
No, you just missed it again.
I'm sorry.
Decreases by one over three squared, which is one over nine. One over nine. Did everybody get the reasoning behind this? If R. If R increases. By three. Then. F decreases. By one over nine. That means the new force. Is five. Newtons divided by nine or five Newtons times one over nine. Which is. Zero point. Five, five, six newton. Okay, any questions?
No.
No, okay, so that means we understand. We're on the same page.
Yes.
Okay, so. I'm going to end the session because we have less than one minute and then we will.